Does that everybody please stand so I can salute the flag?
Put witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the clerk to take the attendance.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Yeah.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Recupero.
Yeah.
Counselor Vito. Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
Counselor Haddelberg.
Here.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor.
I'm here.
Ten members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Okay. First order of business.
First order of business. We have approval of the minutes of the September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Chelsea City Council.
Counselor Vito moves acceptance and follow. There are no objections. Here are no objections. So move. Next order.
Public speaking.
Anyone here for public speaking? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Next order.
We have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keefe regarding grant support. Dear councilors, each year, the Chelsea Police Department seeks grant money from the U.S. Justice Department to assist in its crime prevention efforts. This specific grant, the Justice Assistant Grant, requires a supporting resolution from the City Council. The amount of the requested grant is thirty-one thousand, twenty-six dollars. Accordingly, I hereby request the City Council's support and approve the attached resolution.
Move to accept and follow communication under suspension. If there are no objections, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Seeing no objection, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keefe regarding the Orchard Skate Shop, Adidas, and the New England Revolution donation. Dear councilors, I am writing to request formal City Council acceptance of a half-pipe skateboard ramp donation from a joint collaboration of Orchard Skate Shop, Adidas, and the New England Revolution. This past summer, Orchard Skate Shop partnered with Adidas and the New England Revolution to host a skateboarding contest at Gillette Stadium. A custom-made half-pipe was constructed for this event and is now offered to be donated and placed to the Creekside Commons Park for everyone to enjoy. In accordance with Section three dash five of the City of Chelsea Code of Ordinances and Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three C of Massachusetts General Law, I respectfully ask the City Council to formally approve this donation. A draft order for that purpose is attached, along with an image of the half-pipe.
Calvin Brown moves acceptance and follow communication under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business.
Next, we have second readings. We have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keefe being read for the second time regarding appointment to the Board of Health. Dear councilors pursuant to Section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the Chelsea Board of Health, Mr. Mario Fernandez of Chelsea, for the recently vacated three-year term expiring February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Fernandez is a Chelsea native and resident and is currently a physician's assistant at Boston Children's Hospital. I respectfully request your approval of this.
Counsel Haddelberg asks for a roll call vote on the adoption. See no objections. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed. The appointment is approved.
Next order.
Next, we have another communication received from City Manager Ned Keefe being read for the second time regarding Chelsea Cultural Council appointment. Dear councilors pursuant to Section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the Chelsea Cultural Council, Ms. Yasmin Guevara Alvarez of Chelsea, for the recently vacated three-year term expiring November seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Counsel Haddelberg moves to roll call. Seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. The appointment is approved.
Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents as a transfer from special revenue TNC surcharge distribution fund from funds distributed to Chelsea from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund in order to supplement the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four DPW Streets and Sidewalks Capital Roads Improvement Line item to be used for the.
Counsel Haddelberg moves to adopt this on a roll call vote. Seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. The order is adopted.
Next order.
Next, we move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Councilors Haddelberg, Brown, Vito, and Judith Garcia requesting that the City Council hold a special meeting prior to voting to hire the next city manager to allow an opportunity for the public to express their opinion and provide feedback to the City Council.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
So I actually wish to modify this to simply make it something confirming our understanding out of the subcommittee there that we're going to include public feedback at the subcommittee that we're having.
Ryan, bring your mic down. Your mic.
Oh, sorry. My intention is to, this order is largely unnecessary. We've just sorted out the idea that we will add public feedback to the agenda of our meeting on the thirtieth. So that's the concept that needs to replace this. I'm comfortable withdrawing it. I'm comfortable making a complete edit.
Just got to make an amendment to it.
Yeah. All right. So then I'd motion that we strike the body of this order and amend it to state that we will include public feedback at our subcommittee meeting already scheduled on the thirtieth.
On the thirtieth.
And I'd ask for the adoption of that by roll call vote.
And keep it open for Monday night, October second.
Yep.
Can I?
Let me speak on.
Yeah. I just, just for the public to be clear. So we're having the city manager interviews this Wednesday at seven o'clock. We're having a special meeting where the Collins Center.
Correction. We're going to get the names from the screening committee on.
Yeah, this Wednesday.
On Wednesday. You said interviews.
I said Saturday.
Yeah.
I don't know what I said. Okay. Let's start again. This Wednesday at seven P.M., there will be a special meeting where we will receive the names of the finalists for city manager. And then the following week, on a Saturday, September thirtieth, we are going to interview the candidates here. And the public is welcome to attend. And following the interviews, they can have, provide public input. Anyone that's not able to come to that meeting can still provide comments via email. They can call the city councilors. They can email the office. Or we're keeping that whole thing open up until that Monday where you can come here for public speaking and share your comments on what the, who the finalists are. That night, we are expected to make a vote on who our next city manager would be. And so we just had a lengthy conversation in a subcommittee because for all of us, it's very important for us to allow the space for the public to come and speak on the next person that's going to come managing our city for the next few years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. So that night, we have the option to make a vote. That night does not necessarily mean that we will be voting for the city manager. It just gives us an opportunity to hear from the public and we can digest it if we feel that we comfortable enough to voting as our minds are already made up, then we move forward. But it doesn't mean that we will be making that vote that night. And hopefully, we'll digest before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Anybody else on it?
I'll just add, I'm sure my cousin's sister mentioned it. This will be televised. So Saturday will be televised. If you are not able to make it in, you can watch it on our Chelsea cable.
Be on Chelsea cable. It'll be running simultaneously on YouTube, too. Next order.
He requests a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. On a roll call?
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg.
Haddelberg, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. The order is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next order reads.
Next, we have an order introduced by Councilors Vito, Taylor, and Tenere Garcia. Order that a subcommittee on conference be held with the city manager, Department of Recreational and Cultural Affairs, and the leadership of Chelsea Pride Football to discuss Chelsea's suspension from the league, mitigation for affected youth, and the future of youth football in Chelsea.
Adopt unanimously under suspension. If there are no objections, then I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So for folks that remember last week, we had a city council meeting where we had a couple of parents that came here and informed us that Chelsea Pride Football League had been suspended from the New England Commonwealth Youth Football and Cheerleading League. And they were suspended because they were falsifying medical records. They had falsified at least six medical records for some of the young folks. And so they just, parents found out from, they had a game on Sunday, but they received a mass text that Friday before to let them know that, that there would be no league. There was no talk about mitigation, about getting registration fees back at that point. And so we put in this order to make sure that we were, we were doing our due diligence to make sure that we're holding folks accountable. Since then, there was a meeting that happened last Wednesday, and I know a few councilors were present, where some of the registration fees were returned back to some of the parents. Nonetheless, it's still a huge concern, and I think that we do need to have a conversation because it's not the first time that we've had adults taking from our young people or inappropriately used funds that are, that are supposed to be used for, for, for youth sports. The other, the other concern I have is that I do know that Chelsea Pride received a six-thousand-dollar check from the city on June thirtieth for this league that is now not happening. I think that we keep kind of brushing over the fact that they falsified medical records because I think to me that that's the biggest thing. I mean, basically, they, they altered paperwork so that some kids can play football when obviously they were not able to for whatever reason. And I really think that it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're holding these leagues accountable because people are trusting them to, to lead them, and they're expecting people to do things in good faith. So I just want to make sure that if there is something that we as a council need to put in place to make sure that we're supervising, or if the city needs to take over sports, or if we need to figure out how we empower these folks to do things ethically, by the rules, maybe they need to learn how to file to be a five oh one C three, maybe we need to demand more paperwork. I don't know. But I'm tired of people taking advantage of our young people. When I came into the city council, that was one of the first things that I started, that I, that was on my agenda with a lot of the things that were happening with the soccer leagues at Highland Park. And it just, it's crazy that here we come full circle and it's happening again. And again, it's not the first, it's not the second. It's happened multiple times. So I do want to have this conversation, and I want to make sure that the leadership of Pride is coming. The double concern is that that leadership that we're talking about, one of the, one of the people, Shawna Regan, is also a school committee member. So this gets very tricky in, in when we're talking about leadership in this community and who are we holding accountable. So I want to make sure that we do have a subcommittee, and I urge all of the councilors to make sure to make this a priority and be present because our, the families right now deserve us to be looking out for them and making sure that everybody is following the rules. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
So I just wanted to also clear up some of, some of the statements that were made by one of the parents la, last week. You know, people misunderstand that Chelsea Pride is an independent organization and not under the supervision of the city. So, you know, we can't go in and tell a nonprofit how to run their, their business or what they do or hold them accountable in a certain way, other than if we're distributing funds and can make sure that those funds are returned. You know, my, my, my whole, the whole situation is unfortunate. You know, my main concern out of all of this is basically that kids in Chelsea have an option to play football here. Okay? So whatever happened with Pride, you know, so be it. They, you know, they did what they did, and now they're, now they're, they're in the situation that they're in. That has nothing to do with us. Our responsibility is to make sure that we have some sort of option going forward for the kids because it's really the kids that are losing out in all of this. And I can tell you, my, my own son played in, in Chelsea Pride a couple of years ago before COVID, shut everything down. And it was a good experience. But we need some sort of an option. And so if the city needs to get involved or use our leadership to try to facilitate something going forward, I'm all in for that, and I'll be there to try to, to try to make that happen. So that's all. Thank you.
Counselor De Jesus.
Thank you, President. This is, as my fellow counselor mentioned, very unfortunate. But I do also agree that this, the main focus, and I think many of my colleagues here agree, is, is the kids. And my experience with, with not just my son who played on the league, but also his friends who became his family, right? Because many of the children in Chelsea come to these sports and to these recreational activities because that's their way of forming a family. Many of our parents in Chelsea are working multiple jobs. It's not that they don't want to be at these practices or choose not to be at these practices. Many times, they're not able to. And so the coaches become the mentors. The coaches become almost like a parent that after school either pick up the kid or really make sure that that child is engaged and doesn't get lost in the tracks. And so I, I, I worry the most right now about the kids on the league. And how can we, as a council, really move things quickly to secure that whatever these coaches are doing to make sure that the kids still have something productive to do this season, that we could be supportive to them and to the children? I tell you that since that first game was canceled, I have had three, three kids in my house playing video games, you know, playing cards, playing with board games, the puzzles that the ninety shares with me, like anything at all, as long as they're in a safe space, right? But again, this is nothing on the parents. I really do think that, you know, knowing the community that we live in and that we serve, our parents are up to capacity. The cost of living, all the bills, everything that they have on their plate, it's hard for them. And so these coaches that are making their time to be there and to take on these activities and continue them for their, for the kids, we need to support them. We need to be able to find ways to fund whatever substitution they're coming up with for the kids. I know there's flag football that they're trying to recruit kids for, but they're looking for ways to even fundraise. They need guidance, and we should be able to support them this season and then, you know, continue to talk about what it will look like in the future for next season.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
So we went to the meeting on Wednesday, and some of the parents were there. It was very, it was a very uncomfortable meeting, to say the least, but the parents showed up. And not all of them showed up, so I don't know if, if there was proper communication between the parents and, and the nonprofit organization. But we were lucky enough to get New England Flag Football to come in and take our children at least once a week. So that was a happy moment for me because they, they are able to still be together at least once a week. The Football Association didn't, we don't have time to create a new nonprofit. But for next year, we would need a new board and, and help the parents navigate through that. But again, I think that us as councilors, we need to set up a system or something to supervise these programs, e, even if it's a, maybe we need to take on these projects as, as a city, but obviously, this isn't working. It's happened time and time again. Our children, both of our children are on the league, and it's, it's not fair. It's not fair. It was sad to see them return their uniform without playing a single game. So, yeah, at least they're able to play flag football, and that's an update on what we're going to be doing. With a fee, and they gave us a discount.
Counselor Recupero.
The children of the city have an option. They don't have to go to Pride. They have Pop Warner. Pop Warner's been here for a very long time. No, it exists. They started it up again. Pop Warner's here. There's kids playing Pop Warner, because my grandkids are playing it. They have cheerleaders, so you have an option. You don't have to go to Pride. Before there was Pride, there was Pop Warner. Then all of a sudden, Pride came, and Pop, but Pop Warner exists. It's still in this city, and they were playing. They had a banquet to share and everything. Because one, one of my grandkids plays for Pop Warner. So you do have an organization. If you wish to put your kids to play football, they could go to Pop Warner, which has existed in this city for as long as I've been here. But it was dismantled. Now it's back there. So you do have an option. If you don't want your kid to play for Pride and you want to play, you can go to Pop Warner. It's there.
Counselor Brown.
I don't say anything, but I think a lot of the, the order got missing. I think what we're looking at is, you know, the issue of what's going on, and at the end of it, what type of standard do we have as an elected body in a city to fund organizations without having these organizations in good standing, at least with the city, regardless if they're independent or not? We still need to have something. Maybe it's something we can do annually where they come up and show us a certificate, or we create a certificate or something where they can show us that they're in good standing. Because if you listen to the first speaker, falsifying, you know, medical records, allowing kids to play when they shouldn't be, that's pretty dangerous. That's, that's, that's the biggest issue here. You know, so they shouldn't be playing if they are not able to meet whatever the requirements are. So I think we do need to have some type of conversation. Again, I just heard for the first time, there was a meeting last week. I, you know, I spoke to two parents last week. I gave both of them my card. I received no such call, and I would have been here just to find out what's going on so we can get away from a lot of hearsay and, you know, one or two thoughts of what's happening. It's a concerning issue, and I think we do need to have some kind of understanding. If we're going to give money, and you know, again, we said six thousand dollars. If the city's giving six thousand dollars, it's been using improperly. They have to show they're in good standing if they're going to get any kind of money from the city. Thank you.
If I may speak from the chair. I did attend the meeting on Wednesday night to make sure that it was going to be a smooth transition from the O'Regans back to Louis Santina, which is going to happen. Also, I brought information for the kids who were eleven and twelve, had the option of going over to Everett and playing. The league also did offer to the other kids from the city that they could go and play for those other teams, which would have been a hardship for our kids to be able to go and play somewhere, getting back and forth to another city. But the two members who came and spoke before the council are looking to help reorganize the board and take a little bit more responsibility in moving forward. And they offered to give my assistance and help them to make that sure that that can work.
Mr. President, I also want to add that Louis Santina, you mentioned, is the actual president of the league. He's been in talks with, with the league that suspended Chelsea, and there is conversation about reinstating them, given that the, the brothers that were part of the scam removed themselves from the board. So that it, there is some type of movement happening there. Nonetheless, we still need to have the subcommittee, but I just want to add that.
Well, the, the O'Regans are, part of our conversation was the O'Regans are stepping aside.
Yes.
So that they, they can get reinstated back into the league.
Correct.
Just to add briefly, I know that after speaking to some of the coaches, one of their main concerns is having that guidance about like, you know, what is a C four? How can you do the fundraising? Like, all those little things that they didn't know because it was handled before by, you know, the, the folks.
Or they're going, they're going to look for a new board member. So as a parent, there'll be opportunities for them to step up and be part of the board. Next order of business.
Next, we have a resolution introduced by Council President Robinson and all presidents of the City Council endorsing the city's application to the United States Department of Justice for the Justice Assistance Grant Program. Whereas the City Council of the City of Chelsea has continually expressed a desire to increase the Chelsea Police Department's use of special initiatives focused on anti-gang, drug, and anti-crime activity. And whereas the United States Department of Justice, Justice Assistance Grant Program, if approved, will help fund some of the special initiatives that the city administration and police department wish to undertake. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby supports and wholeheartedly endorses the City of Chelsea's application to the United States Department of Justice for the Justice Assistance Grant Program legal solicitation for the amount of thirty-one thousand, twenty-six dollars.
Counsel Haddelberg moves roll call on the adoption. If there are no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Can I actually say something quickly, Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm, I'm in favor of this, and I'm going to vote for it. Obviously, it's not very controversial, but it's very ironic that we're talking about receiving money to talk about anti-gang and anti-drugs, and we're also talking about one of the most ways that we could prevent some of these things, youth programs to keep kids busy and off the streets. I know that we have a lot of programs. We have the Navigators. We have Roka. We have people that are trying to do the, the, the other side of it, but this is all, everything is correlated. And I, we tend to talk about things in silos, but I just want to make sure that we're always aware that, yeah, we can do these, fund these special initiatives for anti-gangs and anti-drugs, but we also have to give our community the resources they need so that our kids never fall into it in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the matter? Seeing none, clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. The order is adopted.
Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the city pursuant to Section three dash five of the City of Chelsea Code of Ordinances and Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A of the Massachusetts General Law, the Chelsea City Council hereby accepts the donation from Orchard Skate Shop, Adidas, and the New England Revolution of the Half-Pipe Skate Ramp at Creekside Commons Park.
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Counselor Damali Venom moves on. Roll call vote. Seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Counsel.
Yes. Counselor Haddelberg.
I wanted to rise briefly on this one, to speak on it. I actually am a big fan of this, this particular one, and thanks to all the people. I know there's been an enormous amount of work that's gone in behind the scenes, both from the individuals doing some of the networking and city staff doing work on it. I did want to ask, I've talked to a number of the people who are using the ramp, which is ironic to be voting on it. It's already there. I mean, I think we all know that. But, so I will be voting on it, but people are coming from all over the place. I talked to a guy from Pangam who came here because it had what he was looking for. Saw it on social media, so it's kind of cool. But all that said, I wanted to ask if we could take a moment to look at that park with fresh eyes, maybe use this as an excuse. It's a great park, and when we put it in, it had a lot of features that have kind of degraded over time. Like, if you look at the, the back plantings, there's a lanthus trees that have grown up through the bushes that were planted. They're green, but they're actually weeds, right? And the, the trees need to be snipped down because they're sort of threaded through all the, the stuff. Many of the plantings on the back left-hand side have overgrown the bushes. They need to be cleared out. People use those, you know, sat there with my daughter and ate lunch in the summer a couple of times. People come by and, you know, want to build a little encampment in the bushes because it's a little bit of a sheltered space now that the bushes have overgrown the seating arrangements there. Some of the musical equipment is a little bit degraded. Needs to be just cleaned up a little bit. The, the structures that hold the leaves that sort of serve as a canopy, you know, so you walk in and there's intended to be a canopy on these blue poles, and I apologize, I don't quite know the term. Those aren't there right now, and so we have the blue sticks sticking up that just don't do anything, right? So I, I think we could put a little, just sort of fresh eyes on that park and maybe[1740.29] use this as the excuse to just spruce it up a little bit. The, the basic structure is there, it's a wonderful spot. I do wish we could restore the pump. I know there was a problem getting the situation from Germany and the valve that kept going bad, and, you know, it was a multi-year problem. But what we've done is we've shut down that feature. It's clogged. Because it's clogged, the ice sort of breaks up the, the plastic around it, so now there's a nice little pit there that kids trip in. And I, I think we can probably freshen it up a little. That's all.
Council Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the donors for this, the three donors for this, Adidas, New Revolution, and Orchard. Our kids, for years, 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 go way back, been dying for skate park. This isn't a skate park, but this is something that will enhance their activity and enhance their ability to do some of the things and feel safe where they want it to be. I remember ten years ago, they was asking for just the park where we can go and skate, and now we have these sponsors coming in and want to give us this. So thank them for the sponsorship. I look at it, I look forward to it. I know councilor wanted to do some maintenance around it. Maybe that's something we can put an order in for, but I just want to bring some attention to the sponsorships for looking out for Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the matter? Any public announcements?
Yes, we're roll call.
Sorry, jumping ahead. No, we got a roll call on the matter.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Judith Garcia?